Thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming to this, the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, Planning Commission meeting for the city of Malden. I would like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Derhaug, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We'll start on this end, Commissioner Ready, Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Locklear. Commissioner Chisholm. And our chairman, Commissioner Paulson.
Present.
And just for the record, both Mr. Bixler and Mr. Eskridge have indicated they will not be available tonight, so don't miss them.
Thank you. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
We will be covering the following agenda items at the meeting tonight. We're going to be approving the minutes from the July Planning Commission meeting. We're going to be reviewing a preliminary plat for Chestnut Reserve subdivision. We will be reviewing our rules of procedure and the election of officers. We'll discuss the December meeting date. And we'll have a discussion regarding the comprehensive plan. Since there aren't a lot of people present tonight, but I will go through everything for you, just so for you, so you know. We will not be able to discuss any items not listed on the agenda that I just read to you. But you're more than welcome to talk to one of us after the meeting or come by the office during business hours. We're going to do our best to maintain a professional meeting tonight. And that's going to be done by acting professionally and silencing all our electronic devices. So let's get started. We're going to begin with a review and approval of the minutes from the July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have? It's Dan. Sorry, we have a new commissioner tonight, and what was your last name again, Dan? Chisholm? Chisholm. We have a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Chisholm, although he wasn't at the meeting, is that okay?
That's okay.
That's okay? Do I have a second?
So I can say.
I have a second from Commissioner Ready. Is there any discussion regarding that, those minutes? No discussion? I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. Appears to be unanimous vote. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda tonight is discussion regarding the preliminary plat review for Chestnut Reserve subdivision. We're going to begin with an introduction from staff. Are you a representative of the developer? Okay. Very good. After he gets finished talking, you can come up and add anything if you'd like. Since there's no members of the public here, I don't necessarily need to open the floor unless there's someone online.
Procedurally, you'll want to, but.
Okay. Very good. Normally, that's the part where I open the floor to public comment and we'll stick to the procedure. And then we close it once everyone has had their chance to speak their mind on the subject. At any rate, after that, we'll have a recommendation from staff and permission discussion. Mr. Derhaug, will you please introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So this item that you have before you at this time is the preliminary approval of the plat for the Chestnut Reserve subdivision. The applicant's proposing to develop and subdivide this tract for three hundred and forty-seven detached, single-family homes on this one hundred and thirteen-acre tract of land. This represents a density of about three-point-one units per acre. This, there is some history to this project, so let me just refresh you on that right now. This subdivision was previously actually approved in two thousand twenty-one. At that time, it was presented as Section Two and Section Three of Chestnut Ridge. At that time, three hundred and fifty-one homes were approved in Section Two and Section Three. But due to the, some issues with Metro Connects, the developer is requesting to make Section Two and Section Three of Chestnut Ridge into its own subdivision community, which will be called Chestnut Reserve. Additionally, since that time, the developer has annexed an additional sixteen acres that will be part of this new Chestnut Reserve subdivision. That annexation was approved by City Council earlier this year on September eighteenth. With the additional acreage, the developer has also redesigned the layout of the subdivision from what was previously approved. And the number of homes that has been proposed has gone down. So where, and before you had approved three hundred and fifty-one homes in this project, they are now requesting a project with three hundred and forty-seven homes. These homes are projected to sell at price points starting in the three hundred thousands. The community will include an amenity area at the front. Primary access to the subdivision will be via Fork Shoals Road with two additional access points along Union Church Road and an inner development access to Wild Lily Drive at the Meadow Springs subdivision. And I meant to, there you go. On the, oops. On the screen, you see a map of where this is located, so sorry, I meant to pull this up a moment ago. Meadow Springs that I just referred to is a subdivision in the city currently being built out that borders this project on the north. The plans include road improvements to Fork Shoals Road as well as Union Church Road, as has been recommended by Raimi Kemp Associates. And I have one addition that I was not able to include in your report, and that is that DOT has also reviewed this project and their traffic impact study. In addition to the recommendations made by Raimi Kemp, DOT has also requested that the applicant install a traffic signal at the intersection of Reedy Fork Road and Fork Shoals Road. And I think I saw the engineer's representative nodding affirmative that that's what they understand as well. So that's my introduction to this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have when that time comes.
Thank you. Before I continue, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners. Does anyone have a conflict of interest or ex parte communication to disclose regarding this agenda item? Very good. Hearing none. Does the representative of the applicant wish to add any comments at this time? So, okay, so that's nothing right now. I'm going to go ahead and procedurally open the floor to public comment. Normally, we would have everyone come up and they would speak for three minutes. But tonight, we don't have anyone from the public who wishes to comment unless there's someone online. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close the floor now to public comment. And normally, you'd have an opportunity to speak to those comments, but, well, you know. Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Make sure you turn your mic on, if you will, Mr. Chisholm, thank you.
Yeah, I've reviewed the report and I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, please step up to the lectern. It'll all get recorded. Make sure the little light's on. Because they're green.
Yeah. If most of my questions deal with the traffic report.
Yes. Yes, I can.
Right now, before the route that along with Reedy Fork, main entrance of this subdivision will be like directly across Reedy Fork.
Yes.
Right now, DOT does have Fork Shoals on their long-range plan. Be improved at some point. The current rank is sixty-nine, so it's really far down the list. Won't be improved in my life. Basically. But according to rating system, the existing pavement condition is already listed. So if the volume-to-capacity ratio is being already between sixty and eighty percent. The road has a certain capacity. The volume is sixty to eighty percent already of capacity. According to based on the traffic study, the current, the ADT, daily traffic on Fork Shoals has a twenty-twenty-two with six thousand cars per day. On page four of the traffic study. And page five of the traffic study, the traffic engineer has gone through trip generation. And focus subdivision. And the development will generate. It looks like they're saying daily traffic, the single home detached housing will generate three thousand two hundred and seventy-two cars per day. And the retail facility will generate another one thousand six hundred and seventy-four cars per day. That's another almost five thousand four thousand nine hundred and six additional trips on Reedy Fork Road. So that's forty percent additional increase in capacity in volume. Going from six thousand cars to almost eleven thousand cars a day. DOT says the volume of Reedy Fork is already between sixty and eighty percent of its capacity. Will this additional volume cause this capacity now, the volume now exceed the capacity of the road?
Whenever they provide us with this traffic impact study, they do that analysis and then provide us with what we have to do to make sure that this road maintains its functionality. So that's why we are installing the right turn lane into the subdivision. We're installing the left turn lane into the main entrance. And we're installing a right turn lane onto Union Fork Road and all of the traffic improvements that we are showing on this plan. And so DOT has reviewed it and Raimi Kemp has put their recommendations out there. So it's really DOT's call and it's their judgment on this improvements. And they're going to have the final say so on what we have to do to put these houses in and make sure that this road still maintains an adequate functionality.
Your opinion? The route is going to make will maintain volume capacity.
Yeah, we'll have to do a full supplemental to S E D O T. And they will review it completely. And they have, we won't be able to put an encroachment into their right-of-way until they completely approve our plans. So they'll do a complete review of everything. And before the, we can even issue a permit, they'll make sure that our improvements are right and that our roadways are right and that everything is going to be functioning properly.
Just my good question, David. DOT is going to provide additional review for its permitted and the subdivision come back before committing.
No, it, it, it does not. And that's normally how it proceeds. So this, this committee essentially is kind of approving the general layout. But then it goes through the more thorough review, both by the city staff. We reviewed their construction plans and then they work out their arrangements with DOT so they can get an encroachment permit and all that. So after this body, they start working on those pieces so they can get permitting.
So if we give permission to go near traffic. That'll be the last.
Correct. Yep.
All right. I guess these will be my final questions or thoughts. On page seventeen, the traffic study. You've got a couple of tables, you've got a table there addresses what is the level of service of the intersection. Those new. Okay? In two thousand twenty-three, of course, Fork Shoals and Pollyanna exist currently. Fork Shoals and Reedy Fork exist currently. Right now, according to your traffic engineer, the level of service on Fork Shoals and Reedy Fork intersection currently functions in the morning at a level of service of F. It's fatal. In the evening, the level of service improves a little bit to a D. Okay? Fork Shoals and Pollyanna, again, in the morning, functions at a E and a D for the eastbound traffic on Fork Shoals. Or should I say on Pollyanna? And the westbound traffic, well, Fork Shoals function well at a A. Okay? Twenty twenty-seven analysis, your engineer, gives two conditions, one, a no build, meaning you don't build this subdivision. And then it gives a build condition. So with no build situation, twenty twenty-seven, they are saying that Fork Shoals, Reedy Fork, will operate at a F still in the morning. And it will operate at a F in the evening. Big change comes, and according to the data, in the delay at the intersection. Currently, in the morning, the folks in Reedy, at Reedy Fork are experiencing a ninety-eight point nine second delay. So, you know, they're more than a minute, minute and a half delay, I guess. In two thousand twenty-seven, no build situation, that delay goes from the ninety-eight point nine seconds to three hundred and seventy-nine seconds in the morning. The delay goes from twenty-seven seconds in the evening now to eighty-nine seconds. We look at the next column now with the building subdivision. Okay, now, the people on Reedy Fork turning on to Fork Shoals are going to experience a one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine point eight second delay. Folks, that's more than twenty minutes. Simple math, divide that by sixty seconds to a minute, twenty minutes. And of course, the folks in the subdivision, they're the ones who live in your subdivision. They're only three hundred and fifty-four in the morning. But in the evening, and they're one thousand two hundred and eighty-four seconds. Is any of the build things that you're planning to do going to address this level of service? The way I interpret the column, if it's a build situation, your turn lanes are going to put each build.
I cannot speak for Raimi Kemp because this was an outsourced traffic study. But it is my interpretation of the traffic impact study that that is how they determined what traffic improvements were required. So that is how they determined that we needed to put those turn lanes in. So that would be without putting the turn lanes in. So that's where they, they determined that that was going to be a problem and that we needed to put those turn lanes in.
This, this report might consider turn lane.
That is my understanding. I can't fully speak for Raimi Kemp, but that is my understanding. That's usually how those traffic impact studies work. They do a full analysis. And at the end of their analysis, that first page is like their recommendations based on that full analysis.
Additionally, too, this is probably the reason why DOT is requiring a traffic signal at that intersection. So that will obviously mitigate that. You'll still have to sit and wait for the light to change, but not to the tune of twenty minutes.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit concerned or confused also. I've read traffic reports before. And that's, well, my job. And the traffic engineers analyze each leg of the intersection. Check the level of service. They can also analyze the intersection as a whole. What level of service it functions at the pole. Table on page seventeen does not present that analysis or the intersection of the pole at Reedy Fork. Table on page eighteen says if we signalize this intersection, the way I interpret the statement, we signalize the intersection, now the overall intersection will function at a C.
Yep.
Well, if I look back to the other table, if Reedy Fork is going to, Reedy Fork and the intersection of the subdivision are both going to be functioning as a F. And Fork Shoals is going to be functioning as a A. Seems like the average of A and F will be a C. I don't know if that's the case or not. It's not presented, the data's not presented.
I, I think you are, um, and, and I could be wrong, but that table on, that you're referring to on that page, sorry, my page numbers are hiding, eighteen, they're showing the effect solely of putting that traffic signal at that intersection. So what they are showing there is that, um, that is just for the, uh, see, let me read it real quick, make sure I get this right.
I think that's the intersection.
Okay, you're right. They did not break down the eastbound, westbound.
They did not give us the breakdown of the individual intersection. Or did they give us the analysis that the intersection is a whole on the unsignalized? They had given us either one of those, either of those tables, and we could compare it to see how. But, but again, logically, if I've got four legs, two of which are Fs, two of which are As, you would think the average of the two would be a C. So if the unsignalized intersection is a whole functioning at a C, now we're going to signalize it and it's still going to be a C. Did we make?
Perhaps you could take the average wait time that's quoted. Perhaps they take those two numbers and average them, or four numbers. I just know that the numbers I'm seeing on the signalized intersection analysis are far lower than most of the numbers I'm seeing in table four on page seventeen. And there is a lot of data here, it's difficult to interpret completely.
Those are all the questions and observations I have.
Yeah, they have on here, the average is twenty-three seconds and thirty-six seconds. So when I'm looking at that, that must include a vast improvement for the Reedy Fork roadside and the access number one side. Because if, if they were averaging twenty minutes in there, it would be a much, much bigger number.
It would have to be less than a second.
It'd be interesting to see the analysis for the individual legs.
Yeah, I'm looking real quick through their sixty-some pages of appendices. Let's see if there's anything more.
It's hard to find, I'm sure.
On that, but it's in here somewhere.
Are there any details regarding the signal? I mean, just about anytime you get a stoplight, it means you get to go at some point, right? Fast improvement over what they're dealing with now.
They've, and they've been adding signals, various spots up and down Fork Shoals Road recently. So, you know, the effect I've seen as I've traveled that road is that if you're driving along Fork Shoals Road, yeah, you have to stop for, a lot of times, for the light to change to let people on those side roads come in. But, but it usually clears out those side roads in one cycle.
That, that's the concern, I guess, on this one, because most signals are timed for just a minute or two. They're not going to be extended. If you've got a backup Reedy Fork for twenty minutes, how many cycles of the light? Is that traffic going to sit?
I think the reason for that twenty minutes is because during peak hours, there's just no openings to turn on to. So with the light, it's, they didn't, I don't think they put in here the number of cars that are necessarily queued up on those sides, but my experience driving on there is long enough that it can run through on one cycle. I do go up and down that road a lot, because I live out there.
On a serious note, those, those numbers can be typed. One twenty-three, nine point eight, one twenty-eight, one two eight, four point six, they can be typed up.
They can be typed. They're probably not.
Those are the two, two numbers. And even on the first line, stands up six hundred and sixty-three and six hundred and twenty-two.
Thank you for the thoughtful discussion regarding the traffic situation. Additional questions for the applicant?
It's not more of a question, but maybe more of a comment. I think like previously she said, this is, if we go back to the page twenty, after everything is said and done, they do have that in the summary thing that this build volumes can be coming down based on the recommendations they have. And those are the recommendations which were mentioned earlier. So I think that's what you're referring to. If you were to do these recommendations, traffic will come down.
You're showing those recommendations on this plan.
Excuse me, a question related to your detention ponds. So the commercial space is utilizing the pond most directly behind that, the smaller pond, is that correct?
The commercial space is going to be a completely separate future development. And so it should have its own system whenever, it, it's like planned out into, in the future.
So will that be underground?
It, it's not, to my knowledge, being planned to use our detention system at this time. So it would probably be some kind of underground system.
And the ponds that are shown, that's adequate for the entire subdivision?
Additional questions for the applicant?
Not for the applicant, maybe for Mr. Derhaug. On the page one of the five, the very first page agenda item, we are seeing number of homes of three hundred and forty-seven. Attached, single home, single-family homes. But towards the end on the last paragraph, you're seeing three forty-seven detached, single-family homes. Is that something we need to correct, or it's not a big difference?
It should be detached. Did I put? It should be detached, did I put attached some? Oh, I see it, that's a typo.
That's a typo, okay, at least one is a typo, okay.
Thank you for catching that, yep, it's all detached.
Okay, got it. At least five, four and one.
Great, um, if there's no more questions for the applicant, he can, thank you for your time. Mr. Deerhog, will you please provide the recommendation of staff regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So staff has reviewed this for compliance with the city's land development regulations and the zoning ordinance. And have found that this development proposal meets or exceeds all the minimum standards that are in our ordinances. So at this time, it's the recommendation of staff that approval of this preliminary plat include the following conditions. Number one, to satisfy all the conditions provided by the Greenville County Subdivision Advisory Committee. Number two, to provide the road improvements recommended in the traffic impact study. Uh, and then number three, that the full civil engineering and landscape plans will meet all the standards in the codes and ordinances for the city of Malden.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the commission?
What's that? Sure, go ahead, I'll let McKenzie answer that. I'm still turning to my comments here.
Just for the, just so you could be on the record, please. Thank you, sorry.
That, uh, twenty five mile an hour is in reference to Union Church Road. Um, the forty five mile per hour is a DOT road, so they don't have any comments on that. Since Union Church Road is a Greenville County road, um, all of their comments are in reference to Union Church Road. Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Additional questions for staff or discussion? All right then. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve with the staff recommendation.
I have a motion from Commissioner Green to approve with the conditions outlined by staff.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Locklear, again, to approve this preliminary plat with the conditions outlined by staff. Any final discussion? Hearing no more, I'd like to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
It appears to be unanimous. Thank you. You're welcome to stay if you like. Any takers on that one? The next item on the agenda tonight is a discussion regarding rules, officers, and meeting dates. Mr. Deerhog, will you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Chairman, we'll, we'll just do these one at a time. So the first, uh, item that you have is the rules of procedure. Generally, each year, we review our rules of procedure, consider if we want to make any changes. If they're good, we adopt them for the foreseeable future, including the upcoming year. And so we have presented to you tonight, the, uh, rules of procedures that you have been operating by, there's been no changes made to these. Um, if the commit, commission is good with these, you are certainly welcome to make a motion to adopt these as your continuing rules of procedure.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding the rules and procedures? Any recommendations for change? In that case, um, do I hear a motion to, well, do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I motion to maintain our current rules of procedure.
Very good, I have a motion from Commissioner Green to continue to follow the rules and procedures as outlined. I have a second from Commissioner Locklear, any last minute discussion? Nope.
Are you reducing the terms? There is no terms as such. We used to have terms in the past, but no more terms.
Is that going to be our second item?
Uh, so the rules don't necessarily direct the terms, that's directed by ordinance, um, by city council. It used to be that, um, you could, there was a limit on how many consecutive terms you could serve. They have, um, they repealed that a few years ago, you may remember, but there are still terms that you, you serve, they're three year terms, but, um, there's no limit on how many consecutive terms.
Always good.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion regarding this item? Already had, already had two motions, didn't we? So Raj came in right after, um, very good, so, uh, we've had a motion and a second. So let's go ahead and vote, all in favor, uh, indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. Appears to be unanimous vote.
And the next item we have is for the, uh, election of a chair and a vice chair. Generally, this is elected at the first meeting of our calendar year, which for our purposes starts on July one. Um, we, we're still, uh, in July, even though we met, we were still kind of appointing new members to the commission, so we waited on this. As you can see tonight, Jonathan has been serving and currently serves as our chair. Randy Eskridge currently serves as our vice chair. Um, then, from my perspective, they've been doing a great job, we appreciate them. Um, this is the opportunity tonight to elect if you would like to nominate them or others to take that position of chair. The way we'll do this is, um, and I'll go ahead and run this part of the meeting, Jonathan. But I'm going to open up the floor for nominations for one seat at a time, so I'll start with the chair. Um, and you can nominate who you'd like, and, and we can, each nomination must be, receive a second in order for us to move on to voting on it. Um, multiple people could be nominated and seconded, in which case we'll have kind of a ballot election. Uh, but after there's no more nominations, I'll close the floor to nominations, and then we'll have the vote on that. So with that said, we'll start with the office of chair. Are there any nominations, uh, for this position of chair?
Mr. Paulson, if he would like to continue, would you be willing to?
Absolutely.
And I'll nominate Mr. Paulson.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All right, hearing no other nominations, I will close the floor for nominations and, um, present it for a vote, all those in favor of electing Mr. Paulson to continue serving as the chairperson for this commission. Please indicate by the uplift, an uplifted hand and aye.
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 That appears unanimous, thank you. All right, so now we will do the same for vice chair, and just a reminder, essentially the vice chair fills in in running the meeting in the event that the chairperson. And so, uh, we'll let's go ahead and open up the floor for nominations, are there any nominations for vice chair? It's Randy, Mr. Eskridge.
Oh, he will.
Or, um.
This, this is what you get when you miss meetings.
Get all the work. Also, I should note that when I first.
You would be honored.
I first started, um, on the commission, years ago, Randy was the chair. He's got a great deal of experience in that role. Normally I can't. Doesn't show up, he gets what he gets.
This is the first time he's missed.
Yeah, he's got a perfect record. Um, well, but I think he has a pretty good excuse to.
Yeah.
Um, anyway. Sorry, I'm trying to run things, you run it, please, sorry.
So again, uh, floor is open for any nominations.
Commissioner Estrich to remain as vice chair.
This time I'll second it. Okay.
That was, uh, Mr. Ready with the second.
Yes, sir.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll close the floor then to nominations, all those in favor of electing Randy Eskridge as vice chair for the commission. Please indicate with a uplifted hand and aye.
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 All right, that passes unanimously, five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then the next item is, uh, just to talk about December. Uh, normally we meet on the fourth Tuesday, if we did that in December, that would fall on December twenty sixth. I'm sure no one has any interest in coming out here for the day after Christmas, so. Um, staff is proposing that we move that one week ahead, so it would be December nineteenth. So I just wanted to see if y'all are okay with that, and if you are, if you'll vote to, uh, go ahead and move that meeting date.
I motion to move the meeting date to December nineteenth.
All in favor, wait, 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 wait. I think we're, uh. We're all in agreement that a move to December nineteenth will be fine.
You can go ahead and vote if you want on it.
All in favor of the move? Thank you, please raise your right hand, aye. Thank you.
And then the last thing on our agenda tonight is I wanted to give you just a brief update on the comprehensive plan. We have put out a request for proposals from, or consultants who would be interested in, uh, developing the comprehensive plan for the city of Malden. Uh, that request for proposals ended last week, and we did receive eight proposals from interested, uh, companies in doing that, and so, right now, we have a, a small committee of staff who are going through and reviewing each of the proposals, but, um, uh, we're very encouraged and delighted with the response that we have received, that's, that's a great, uh, output. Several of them are, are from South Carolina, or have offices in South Carolina, and, and have a lot of familiarity with, with the upstate, so we're excited about that. So we, I'll keep you posted and updated on how that goes. But as we start then to engage into the actual comprehensive planning process. Um, I expect that the planning commission will be involved with that at some level. And so, uh, hopefully that'll be exciting for you guys as well to, to be engaged with the planning process as it comes along.
Thank you, that's great news. Eight, eight different, um, proposals to choose from, seems like a lot.
It is.
And, uh, I was afraid you were going to say one.
It's going to be a hard choice, I've, I've actually just finished studying and reviewing them all today, and going through their bodies of work and other plans that they've prepared in the last couple of years, and there's some good companies there, we'll have a hard choice.
That's excellent, we've been, we've been, uh, this is some long time coming. The, uh, difficult job, and, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, seeing what work comes out of it.
They, they have to submit a financial component with their proposal calls.
Yes. And so we have a budgeted amount for that. Um, for the most part, six of the eight proposals were under or like right at. And when I say right at, maybe like, no, none of the six were more than two thousand dollars over that budget amount. Um, there were two other, there were two proposals that were in far excess of that, but, uh, but that still leaves us with six who are right at or under our, our budget amount, so that's great.
Right.
S- state law does, so state law requires it to be, uh, the, for you to do a new comprehensive plan every ten years, and then it needs to be reviewed every five years, so. We're, uh, depends on how you look at it, we're at that or past that, but, um, it, it, like was mentioned by Mr. Ch, Mr. Paulson, this is a long time coming, so we're going to be excited to get, engage in this process. It comes, we're doing it at a good time, I feel like, because now we have the benefit of some census data to, to use while it's still somewhat fresh. And then, um, we've, we've kind of gotten a little bit past the COVID effect on the market, so we at least understand that a little bit better than we would have a few years ago. I think it was in two thousand nineteen that we were entertaining, doing a new comprehensive plan then. In hindsight, I think it's definitely worked to our favor that we waited because of everything that had hit in twenty twenty.
Excellent, thank you so much. Oh, that appears to be all the items on the agenda? Any more business? No. I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Locklear, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Is that Mr. Ready with the second, or Mr. Green, I think.